Let's go.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:09 PM. And we will go to item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on from public comment. And we'll move to item number four, approved minutes from the November 21st, 2017 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item number five is first selectance report handed out tonight. You have a debt profile. Everybody should have had that when they came down. Looks like this. Rory, did you hand it out, the debt profile?
Yeah.
I'll just put it.
Nope.
No? In what folder? It was in the stack I gave you stuff. Well, that's important. Thank you, Mrs. McMurray. Yep, there, okay. Three, that way. One and two, that way. I apologize on behalf of Rory.
Don't pick on Rory.
Okay. Could be questionable.
Maybe not.
It was funny, Rory did all the appointments and forgot to put himself on. Okay, so when, when we had John Healy and, of Mesro Capital and Bruce Chudwick from Shipman and Goodwin come to talk to us about the upcoming bond issue, you saw a completely different debt profile as to how we were going to borrow the money. Before we moved forward, John Healy and I took a ride up to Boston and met unofficially, excuse me, with S&amp;P, just to show them kind of what our plans were, why we were doing it, walk them through everything. S&amp;P made some recommendations, and based on their recommendations, we changed how we're going to do things. So if you take a look at what you see, the orange and the green, that is our current debt profile. So that's what our debt's going to look like. The blue triangles and the lines, that's what our debt will look like going forward. So again, we're going to accomplish the goal we had of giving us a tremendous amount of flexibility within the next five years to absorb or be able to address any type of cuts in the state of Connecticut. And in return, obviously, we'll pay a little bit more, a little bit longer, so you can see that clearly. Their goal was to have us have 65% debt retirement in 10 years. We're going to be 65% debt retirement in 12 years. It's going to have no impact on our budget. I went up and actually did a formal presentation to S&amp;P last week. They were very receptive to this. Actually, they skipped over a lot of the general stuff that you do in a bond presentation with S&amp;P, they just wanted to go through the numbers. Their concern, obviously, is to make sure towns are not doing this to try to mask any type of inefficiencies or mask any type of problems that they may have, which we don't have. So we're expecting a positive rating on Thursday when we get that back. So I just wanted to go through that with the board and see if anyone had any questions. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'd like to add to the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding update to the Seymour Parks Commission application.
So moved.
Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding Parks Commission application. Okay, so you have the updated application and special events permit for the Seymour Parks Commission. They like to put this in front of us with the start of each year, just to make sure that we have no issues or concerns. And then this is the application that they will use for that year going forward. So looks very similar to what we have seen in the past. Just of note, on page two, there is a fee schedule, and that determines the cost for the use of the fields, and that just draws everyone's attention to number seven, Debarber Field Fee, is $4,000. So if a group wants to use Debarber Field, they will be assessed a fee. That money will be held in a special revenue account, and that money is used to help offset the cost of maintaining the field.
Just a quick, just a typo on the first page. Number one, there's a number two at the end of the first sentence.
Okay.
Seymour school teams and groups are first priority on town fields.
Okay, yep. So we'll make a note of that. Any other?
I worked on this with Bill Swift, didn't I, years ago?
Yeah, this is basically the same one that we've had now for a few years. But again, they just like to be thorough and make sure we're comfortable.
Yeah, oh yeah. Can I just have a couple more seconds here?
Sure.
Yeah, they added number eight, that's a new thing. Here it is, number six on the back.
So I guess I have a, I have a question on the Debarber Field, so like, Pop Warner uses that field, Seymour Pop Warner, so are they charged that fee?
No.
Okay.
It's part of that, so I think what they're getting at is if you and I want to have an event on the field.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know.
Yeah, pay four grand, because they're going to be cleaning up and all that other stuff, right?
If anyone would that apply to?
Yeah.
State wanted to have a state playoff football game, charity, not a charity event, football game, soccer game, something like that. Yeah, and they want to use it for, state wanted to use the track for an event, anything like that.
What about the hurri, when they, we had, I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
When we had the, when they had the fanfare up there?
No, Hurricanes Fanfare.
Okay.
Is that because they're nonprofit?
Nonprofit, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, the Hurricanes, they allow the Fathers Club to run the concession stand, they pay for the police officers, they make, so, I mean, they pump a lot of money back into Seymour for that, so.
Good, okay.
Yeah. This would be for a true out-of-town group that wants to play on turf, we would, we would charge them.
Okay.
Or even an in-town event.
Depending on.
Not a nonprofit.
Yeah, depending on what the event is.
For-profit entity wanting to rent the field out for some reason.
Yes.
So what do other towns do for it? Do they charge a fee like this?
Oh, yeah.
Are we getting up to speed here with that?
Yeah.
So it sounds like anything that falls under the town's umbrella is pretty much exempt from this?
Yes.
But things that are outside of, you know, town control?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I have two questions.
Sure.
With regard to number five on the front page, all Seymour Parks are closed 30 minutes after sundown, what is the penalty? Because I know that I've been told that it has not been enforced.
Uh, that's something that the police would handle.
Yeah.
So I guess it would depend on the decision of the officer.
So the penalty is a trespass or a simple trespass, or?
I would, I would assume the Seymour Police Officer would pull in and say, guys, the parks, folks, the parks closed, they leave, and there's no problem. If they refuse to leave, I guess that would be at the discretion of the officer.
Then there's a problem.
Yeah.
All right, and then number six, alcoholic beverages are not allowed at any time. We've been there, we've talked about this, it says no exceptions, we made an exception already, we've set a precedent.
That's for?
It does, it's French Memorial Park.
Yeah.
Right on the front page.
I don't understand.
The carnival.
Oh, well, that's, groups, we can waive that, the Board of Select, but that's what.
But that's not what this says. It says no exceptions capitalized.
I think they're getting at individuals, Karen, so if you and I decided to come to the park, and we had open containers, and we had something in a cooler, that's not allowed.
Like for a baseball field.
Right.
Yeah.
If we were going to watch a soccer game, going to a baseball game, we can't show up as parents or whatever to watch the game and crack a beer open.
By standards.
The fire department, correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department wouldn't qualify, wouldn't have to fill one of these things out anyway, because it's a town department.
Oh, no, they still have to fill it out.
They still have to.
They still fill it out, yep.
So maybe this, maybe the no exceptions here might be.
Or by special permit only.
I'd re-apply your point.
I mean, the legalese is, is, there are no exceptions.
Agreed, that, that's not accurate.
So alcoholic beverages are not allowed at any time, except?
When a special permit.
What you're saying, with a special permit.
I would just take out the no exception, and that, yeah, special permit or something like.
Right, I think you just take out no exceptions, and then there's a permit process that's applied for.
That's, what I'm saying is that you avoid the problem by eliminating that language, not that I'm opposed to it, I'm not, as you know, I argued strenuously against it based on the deed.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
That I read, but I, I mean, if you're going to put that, no exceptions, into this policy, you're going to have a problem.
So alcoholic beverages are not allowed at any time unless through a special permit?
Couldn't we just put that, put that in place for all of the rules, considering the carnival clearly runs 30 minutes after sundown? There's other possible exceptions here.
I think we're getting at Parks, those stuff, and the lights.
Right, no, I, I, I am somebody who usually believes, like, common sense should prevail, but if we have a document here that lists out the exact rules and procedures, maybe we, we put, please read the rules and procedures only to be, only exceptions to be made by Board of Selectment, or something along those lines.
Yeah, a blanket disclaimer that said that we could waive it would probably make sense.
So number 12 then.
Instead of arguing every time this comes up about a different rule or something.
Well, it also might be applied differently by different groups.
Right.
Different quorum might apply.
Well, that could lead to a problem also, I mean, look at, you've got, in the first column here, you've got something as narrow really truly as the Broad Street Park gazebo. It doesn't say the park, it says the gazebo.
So I like, I like Stephane's comment, that we just put that in there, and then that.
So add a number 12.
Yeah.
Everybody's good with that?
Or just put something that, you know, please read the following rules and procedures, subject to review, review about Board of Selectment to that effect.
I would agree with that.
I'm sure there's better language.
Exceptions to be made by the Board of Selectment.
I'd agree with that.
The only thing that would come to us would be the alcohol.
Yeah.
The general type of disclaimer language, right, or at the end, like, all decisions pending approval.
It might be good to be clear upfront to it.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't even put it at 12, you could put it at 1.
Okay. So, all right, so create a new number one. Everybody good with that?
And move everything down. And then, basically, what you're saying, to Karen's point, is.
Rory, you got that?
The Broad Street, the Broad Street Park gazebo.
Gazebo.
You're, you're basically just saying gazebo, that you need a permit for the gazebo to get married at the gazebo, but you can get married in the park and you don't need a permit.
Where are you looking?
First column.
Right here, first column, right here.
Location of events.
Far left column, it's like the 7th, 3rd, it's down.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so, so what if I want to get married there, and then I want to shoot off fireworks?
You can't.
It doesn't have alcohol, it doesn't say I can't.
Shoot fireworks?
Yeah.
Shooting fireworks are illegal.
You need a permit for that.
I think she's talking to a metaphor or something.
I am, if, if I, you know, get married.
There's the connection.
There's going to be a segue here, by the way.
At the end of the wedding.
It will be a segue.
But if you look, there's Chatfield Park, Chatfield Park Pavilion, Socrans Pond Park, Socrans Park Pavilion, so they need to add Broad Street Park.
Yeah.
In that list.
Or just get rid of gazebo and just leave the gazebo in there or something. That way you don't have two different groups trying to provide for the same piece of property.
I can see the argument for making Chatfield Park and Chatfield Park gazebo separate, because it's theoretically possible, not necessarily we never get into this, that two groups could use the park at the same time. Broad Street Park, I don't see any scenario in which two different groups are going to be using the park at the same time.
You'd never know.
One with the pavilion, one with the.
Gary, Gary or Chatfield Park, that could happen.
Because Bob Lang will call me, as president of Seymour Soccer, and say, is the pavilion being used? No, Bob, we just have games, we have a birthday party at the pavilion all day.
Right.
And sometimes the coaches will have a pizza thing with the kids at the end of the season.
So we want to keep Broad Street Park just gazebo?
Well, I would just say Broad Street Park.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Rory, wipe out gazebo and Broad Street Park.
No, just wipe out gazebo, not Broad Street Park.
Gazebo, sorry. Yeah, wipe out gazebo and Broad Street Park, yeah.
So we're keeping Broad Street Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the tennis courts that are referred to under Seymour High School would also include the tennis courts at French Memorial Park?
No, French Memorial Park has their own, French Park tennis courts.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed it, okay.
Got it.
Yeah, it might make sense, I mean, just to, I hate tearing these things apart, it seems silly, but.
Yeah.
Just in looking at the special.
We're rolling now, so why stop?
Why stop? Looking at the special events permit, you know, along with the application here, it might make sense to sync up the language on both, because, you know, you look at a Broad Street Park, it's just listed as Broad Street Park under the permit, versus the application says the gazebo, and just try, just try to make a recommendation that maybe the Parks Commission sync up the language so it's all consistent.
Yeah.
You know, and you can argue all night long that it's a silly thing to try to dissect this whole document, however, for those of you who didn't read the deed to French Memorial Park, as I did, we came really close. The French family has the right to take that park back if we do something they don't want us to do.
Save us a lot of money in grass cutting.
It's right in the deed. Well, you can make a joke of it and say, save us a lot of money, but on the other hand, it makes a lot of money when you put a pumpkin festival there.
Not for the town, though. It actually costs us a lot of money. Costs us a lot of money. I mean, for the, yeah, I, I'm just teasing, okay?
All right. For our vendors, for our businesses. We would take a little more than that.
Did we figure out who the Gary guy is?
Come on, let's go.
Oh.
I was going to let that go.
Can I just have one other quick point?
Sure, Al, we're rolling.
Under Gary Park, shouldn't that be a heading unto itself, and then have subheadings of baseball field, soccer field, pavilion playground, so the little check mark next to Gary probably should go away, and that should be kind of a, like a line to itself, like Seymour High, Middle School, you want it to be consistent.
Rory, did you get that?
Time video.
Unless there's a possibility to, I, I think, actually, that's, that's probably fine. My other question was, pardon my ignorance, what is Randall Field?
Oh, that's, right next to the old middle school.
Oh, Community Center Field, okay.
The first person killed in the war.
Okay.
That was just dedicated two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago, yeah, it's brand new.
Okay.
Fred, good news, you're getting married in the.
You shoot off fireworks.
In the Broad Street Park gazebo, and then there's going to be fireworks afterwards.
To lead into the segue.
Karen?
You're renewing your vow, Fred.
Yeah, that's right, it's a vow renewal.
We've, we've done that once.
And the guy from Gary Park's coming to do the ceremony.
I want fireworks.
Gary, from Gary Park's fame is coming. All right, so Rory, you have all those changes? Okay, all right, so is everyone okay approving this with the changes that we discussed being made?
For now.
Yes.
Okay, and then what we can do is have an updated one included in the packets for our meeting on the 21st, just so you can see it. Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay, at this point, then, I'll entertain a, no, we already did that. No, no, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Town of Seymour Parks Commission application and special events permit as presented by the Parks Commission, with the changes discussed in this meeting being added. Motion by Len, second by Stephane, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Okay, item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding LED streetlight conversion contracts. Okay. Rory made a little presentation at our last meeting, kind of going over where we stood with the streetlight project. The contract itself was sent on to Town Council to be reviewed by Brian Lima. So Rory, can you give a little update as to where we stand with that, please?
Hi Rory.
Hi Rory.
I talked to Brian Lima today, he sent over a redlined version of the contract. The changes that were made have nothing to do with the project itself, it's mostly indemnity and things like that, and where any disputes would be settled in this department, et cetera, et cetera, so I can't imagine that Real Term would have an issue with it, but they have not gotten back to me on the contract. So, you know, any approval tonight would be pending, Real Term's acceptance of the changes and some back and forth. And then, the only other thing I would say is, we have, you guys have a decision on the scope of work, in terms of the streetlights, the external building lights, as well as the five new streetlights.
Okay, all right, so let's break this down into two parts. First, let's talk about the scope of work and what's to be accomplished, and then, once we have some consensus on that, then we'll move into the contract itself, we'll talk a little bit about that, and what I'll probably do is ask for the board's approval for me to sign the contract once it is signed off on by Town Council. But let's start with the, the scope, and that was the executive summary packet that you all received last week. So it's, we have a couple different things. So for the streetlights themselves, the cost to convert all of the streetlights to LED is 340, oh, excuse me. There we go. I'm sorry, yeah, 382,494 dollars. So we're all in agreeance that we want to go through the process of converting all of the streetlights to LED, correct?
Yes.
I hope so, because we just bought all the streetlights. Okay, so, next is the extra lights. So the, excuse me, the exterior lights, I apologize. Rory, can you just give them a quick explanation what the exterior lights are, just so everyone is aware?
So for example, at Town Hall, you've got the one over the main entrance by the clerk's office, you've got the two right here, floodlight in the parking lot, it's basically that. And then at Parks, there's a lot of decorative fixtures, and French Park has a ton.
Okay.
You've mentioned this before, right, Rory?
Yes.
That sounds very familiar.
Yep. All right, so that cost is 142,549 dollars. That's decision number two. And then decision number three would be adding five additional streetlights. These spots were all picked because of safety reasons. Number one is going to be on Ansmore Road, at the intersection of Ansmore Road and Great Hill. One will be on Jacko Drive, right there on, off of Holbrook. One on North Main Street, at the curve at 400 North Main Street, so as you're coming down, you know, you take the left to go back up to French Park the back way, right on that corner. One on Derby Avenue, which would be directly across the street from Vem's, obviously with as much traffic happening at Vem's, we thought it makes sense to light up right in front of Vem's. And then, next to Broad Street Park, right by the overpass, we just want to make the park a little bit brighter. The cost to add the Cobra Head fixtures and everything for those five is 21,208 dollars. So if we take, if we do all three projects, the streetlight conversion, the exterior building light conversion, and the new Cobra Heads, the total is 546,250 dollars. So first decision we're going to make is, do we want to move forward with all three? Do we want to move forward with only certain ones? So what we'll do is, I'll just move down and we'll just take a vote on each one, if that's okay, Rory? Okay. All right, so the first one will be the streetlight conversion. So we'll be converting all of the streetlights in the town of Seymour at a cost of 382,494 dollars. We have a motion to do so. Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next, the exterior building light conversion for 142,549 dollars. Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, sorry, I forget from the last meeting, all of these parts are going to be cost neutral or beneficial to us in the long run?
Yes. The payoff for, the simple payback for the exterior building lights, LED upgrade is five years.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to reconfirm.
And these have, Rory, correct me, they have 15 to 20-year lifespans? Okay, so what about the?
The fixtures? LED lights in general have a much longer service life. The streetlights are rated for 100,000 hours. Unlike the streetlights, the exterior building lights are not uniform, they would basically try to match what we already have.
Excuse me.
So it varies, but they, as far as I know, do not have the 10-year warranty.
So what warranties do they have, though? It depends on, here, so.
Yeah.
So just in general, what's the warranty on these things? Is that, is the question?
I would have to check, because there's, I mean, there is.
They're specialized, right?
Because we have floodlights, we have decorative lights, it, I couldn't speak, because it's going to vary picture to picture. The, the service life of the lights should be comparable. Maybe a little lower for a floodlight, but I mean, the diodes are the same, it's just the way they're arranged, basically.
What would be the average cost of replacement of such lights?
Depending on the light, the average price per fixture is 734 dollars and 79 cents.
Yeah, I remember that number, I knew that.
The price per fixture is a lot higher for the external building lights, for that reason, because there's a variety, you know, a floodlight is going to be more expensive than a single fixture that's wall mounted.
So do we have any data about how often they fail? Like what the average life expectancy is on the, the one we're going to buy the most of, and is there something that can?
Oh, I don't believe that we have.
There's 194 lights.
Yeah, so the other, we, we have, if you heard, you have the full version.
But there's 194 lights.
I have the summary.
So I guess my question is, Kurt and Rory, how many are similar or the same?
So, so in the, the cost calculations that are included in that, they take into account maintenance costs for the current lights, as well as the LED lights, and their estimates. We didn't tell them, okay, well, we had 25 fixtures fail last year, and 25 the year before that.
Right.
They're guessing. They estimate the maintenance to be significantly lower because of the extent of lifespan. But again, you know, if there's an issue with the building, there's a surge, and one of the lights blow, LED fixtures are more expensive.
Right.
Well, maybe this will help answer kind of both your questions. Before the upgrade, the assumption was our annual maintenance costs for these 194 lights were 5,529 dollars a year. They're projecting that post-upgrade, our annual maintenance costs will be 1,106 dollars, so a savings of 4,423 dollars.
In year one?
In addition to the energy savings.
In addition to the energy savings, yes.
In year one.
In year one, yep.
So that would pay for roughly?
Six.
It's going to pay for like six of them, right, five or six of them, right off the bat.
Yep.
It still sounds like a slam dunk.
And again.
Just making sure.
We're going to say, and I know this goes into the, you know, the, obviously, the payback period, but the savings on electricity, just on these 194 lights, is projected to be 27,307 dollars. Does that answer?
Oh, yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, all right.
I would imagine, and I can get verification, but the streetlights have a 10-year warranty on the fixtures and a one-year guarantee on the labor. I would assume that Real Term would be going to extend the labor warranty for one year for the external building lights.
Okay, would be good to ask. Glad to have a month for it. All right, thanks.
All good?
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so on the second one, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes six-zero. Excuse me, and then the third one, this is the new Cobra Head fixtures. Um, so the five Cobra Head fixtures, Ansmore Road, Jacko Drive, North Main Street, Derby Avenue, and next to Broad Street Park, uh, those five fixtures at a cost of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Second by Len, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion on these? Everybody's comfortable with?
If anything makes sense.
Okay. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes six-zero. Okay, so we have the scope of work established. Now we're gonna go back to the contract. The contract's what you have handed out to you tonight, which we have the red line version that Brian Lima has gone through, um, that has been discussed. So at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to agree to, and Rory, make sure I say this the right way, please, uh, entertain a motion to have the board give me the authority to sign off on the agreement pending sign-off and acceptance of all changes by town council.
Tom.
You good? Okay. Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Al. Okay, under discussion? Anybody have any questions, concerns? I mean, we'll obviously bring the final version of the contract back, so everybody can see that, um, but there is some time sensitivity to this, and I don't wanna wait till the twenty-first. So assuming, um, Brian can get this all squared away with Real Term, uh, if I have this, I can just move forward, sign it, and we can start the process.
I mean, other than scope of work, this is pretty standard boilerplate language in any contract, so.
Yes, and I will come back to you, um, with the determination on financing and things like that, just depending on how we're gonna handle it. We're still going back and forth, uh, as to which way is going to make the most sense. Uh, you know, a lot of it depends on what's going on in the state of Connecticut, how much cash, you know, we wanna hold and reserve, different things like that. So, um, you know, as we know, the, the savings are gonna be substantial, we've talked about that, so it's how we want to maximize that. The budget that we have currently in place is substantially higher than what Real Term is saying our costs plus maintenance are going to be. So even if we kept our line where it is and didn't move it, it would encompass just about all of the financing anyway. So we can keep it, uh, budget-neutral, um, absorb the savings, hold on to our cash, and do it that way, but I wanna go through analysis of that, just to make sure, that we know exactly what we're looking at, and I hope to have that for you on the twenty-first.
Let me just bunch the numbers on that.
Yeah, I'll come up with a little spreadsheet for everybody.
Great, great.
So, okay? Comments, thoughts? Everybody's good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much, that's been a, about a year and a half process.
Yep.
So, but it's gonna be a very good thing for, uh, for Seymour. So Rory, thank you for your, uh, work on this one. Rory's kinda shepherd this project. Don't say that, 'cause it'll cost him more money.
Yep.
Okay, out of number seven. Uh, discussion, take possible action regarding town of Seymour drug testing policy. The town, uh, in your pack, or actually, I, I emailed to you, uh, and then I think you all have it handed out tonight as well, um, is an opinion that was, uh, Warren put together with regards to urinalysis drug testing of employees. We are required, uh, to drug test any employee that has a CDL license, which we currently do. So all of our public works employees are randomly drug tested. Um, we are also now drug testing our bus driver. We had not been drug testing our bus driver, so the, the person who drives the senior citizen or the community services bus, but he is also an employee of DATCO, so he is receiving random drug tests along, but we're still going to, uh, drug test him anyway, just to, uh, to meet the letter of the law. The question we have is, do we want to put together a formal policy of some kind that deals with other employees? And with that, I wanna kinda turn it over to Warren, maybe just to give a little background on what we can and can't do, and kinda summarize the four or five pages.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about, obviously, non-CDL, uh, private people don't drive CDL vehicles, part of the [inaudible]. So, you can always do these, Mrs. Bishop, I should, should drop back. Um, as indicated in my, my opinion, um, a, a drug, and I say, uh, urinalysis drug test, it's the same as drug and alcohol, it's alcohol, it's considered as drugs, etc., etc. So those types of tests are, um, search of, they're only in the Fourth Amendment of our Constitution that have to be used. The question, under the law, what's the use of the search? Uh, use of the search of a public employee is, uh, if you have legal suspicion, if the person under the drug or alcohol work, um, it's always safe, like I said, to have people with a frame, making that type of, uh, detecting the symptoms of, uh, people who are under the influence, driving people with heart frames, to detect and judge, but, uh, anyone having legal suspicion applies to everybody, uh, and with respect to people who are in, um, uh, safety-sensitive positions, uh, high-risk safety-sensitive drug acquisitions, and that hasn't been defined, uh, completely by law, in case of some of the [inaudible]. They can only be randomly drug tested if you have a systematic, uniformed applied policy. Um, and in other words, you can't single out any individuals to be randomly drug tested who are in a safety-sensitive position, because that would violate the Fourth Amendment, that would be archer, [inaudible] the time that it's put. You also have, uh, post, uh, post-accident, uh, traffic accident, uh, testing that you can do, um, but that's, uh, in the separate, uh, separate testing initiative. So the real question is, when you want to implement a random drug testing, uh, and to do that, you have to, it depends on, it has to be a group of people in the same classification, so everybody has to be treated the same, and the testing has to be random, obviously, there's a cross associate to that, and the, uh, there's a, um, state law under court, and the, uh, the label puts out the risk of safety-sensitive positions. However, that law only applies to private employees, not private government employees. So I think you have to look the whole thing face-to-face to see what the safety-sensitive position, uh, position could be, and it's not completely defined, but murky. Um, for example, some of the cases, uh, well, they're also often [inaudible], so when you draw a frame, it's, you know, typical. Um, so for example, if somebody's driving a vehicle that has passengers, um, generally, that that's a safety, uh, of course, it's pretty low, pretty low status, like a safety-sensitive type of position. If somebody is, uh, driving a vehicle, um, but not, um, doesn't have any passengers, some courts, uh, I think this is the kind of prevailing view, that consider that to also be safety-sensitive. There's a reason where somebody, um, loses their judgment, his care, um, then something drastic can happen if they're driving a vehicle regardless of the court, um, to drive a [inaudible]. So, and, and obviously, people who are, uh, dealing with, uh, [inaudible], it's kind of a common sense type of, uh, analysis, uh, of what's a safety position. So if you want to implement a policy, you have to figure out what department's going to do, uh, define what you think is a safety-sensitive, uh, one, make sure that they're gonna have mustard, uh, leaders. Um, and then, um, with respect to manual employees, to our union employees, um, that's considered under the Municipal Confederations Act, uh, the Streetwise Federation, um, back in nineteen eighty-seven, in eighteen-eight, in that case, that established, you know, the proposition, uh, that, that's an [inaudible] impacts of working conditions, so it's something you have to [inaudible]. If you can't, I know that municipalities, you're not allowed to implement a random drug testing, uh, policy for safety-sensitive positions, they have to sit down and negotiate that with the union. So to extend to union people who are involved, you have to do that. There's another layer here that I don't mention, um, in my, uh, in my letter, uh, which is, uh, that, for example, it really applies to, uh, for, uh, who do you work? You obviously can't drink alcohol while you're working, um, but if you can drink alcohol after you're done, and you're working on [inaudible]. Well, now, with Connecticut, they've criminalized marijuana, possession of marijuana, I think it's a half an ounce or less, it criminalizes [inaudible]. The thing that arises, well, if somebody's employee does it on duty, they take a random drug test, you know, these, uh, the [inaudible] are very, it's still in their system, uh, it's still in their system. But then the question becomes, that's off-duty conduct, it's not criminal, does that impair their performance? I don't know whether, 'cause you have to have, uh, a judge clause under [inaudible], discharge, discipline, for you, and so what does that constitute if you wanna fire somebody because they have, um, traces of marijuana, or, you know, PCP or whatever.
T, oh.
THC. THC.
Yeah, PCP's very different.
Yeah, but, uh-
You still have the issue to [inaudible]. You probably would, [inaudible] about whether, um, that, um, off, uh, duty conduct would, uh, because you have to stop [inaudible]. Um, you know, [inaudible]. I don't know. I don't, I have seen cases, uh, that I know of, I just don't know who, how it actually is, with, sort of, the criminalization of marijuana, too, recently, for non-union members. And unfortunately, state board of [inaudible] is not, uh, has a [inaudible]. So those are all issues to, uh, consider, um, and I guess the, uh, kind of the threshold is, uh, issue was, um, wouldn't you consider doing that at all? There's a cross associate to it, um, you can always, uh, test for legal, uh, suspicion, and I don't know how many, uh, physicians you think you might have that are not CDL physicians, other than, of course, [inaudible], um, because of the, the nature of the duties, um, is to recognize them in a safety-sensitive position. Um, then again, it might be, it's just a little bit of [inaudible] something like that in the contract, if you're using a [inaudible], you'd have to go to [inaudible] and see what happened in the situation, but, you know, some [inaudible] here, and I don't know what the information is, but those are some of the issues.
Okay, so where we stand now is, like Warren covered every single base, pretty much, that we have. Non-CDL people that would be under consideration would be the director of public works, the police department, the fire department, Seymour ambulance, uh, economic development director, the assessor, myself, and I think that covers everyone.
I would think it'd be-
So, uh, but of that group, only two, well, of the employees, quote-unquote, employees of the town, there's only two that are non-union. The rest are all union members or volunteers to the town. Uh, we currently drug test somewhere between eighteen and twenty is the target, um, every year, that's the number of people that are available. So this is going to multiply that tenfold. Now, obviously, cost shouldn't be the thing driving this, but we need to make a determination of, do we wanna go forward with this, um, with the understanding, as Warren said, we're gonna have to negotiate with, uh, three different unions to get this done. So, I don't know if somebody just wants to jump in and start, and then we'll just kinda go from there.
I have, I have two thoughts. First of all, personally, I'd like to see this table. Uh, I'd like to be able to read a little bit more. I, I mean, I just got this tonight, and I'd really like to be able to read a little bit more. I recognize one of the cases that you've cited here, the Vernonia School District versus James Act, and he was a fifteen-year-old kid who was searched by a principal, um, for possession of drugs, and it was more, it was a, a free speech issue, um, i- in the totality of the argument, there was a, a free speech issue. I'm referring to paragraph number two, the very last two li- two lines, num- well, number two, actually, number three, the Vernonia School District.
Right.
Um, because he was just a kid, but his, his issue was that the principal didn't have the authority.
Right, but I think, Karen, the point is, he's, he's, he's delineating the three factors to determine the constitutionality of the search.
I understand that.
With the three, as it comes out of the case.
I understand that. Now you're in an area that I know something about, and-
Okay.
I, I, I really feel that I'd like to see this tabled, so that, because of some of these other cases, the New Haven case I vaguely know about, um, and I think Warren's, uh, point about the, the issue of marijuana just being legalized complicates this, I'm sorry, decriminalized, oof. Um, it, uh, it, it, it gives us something, uh, another parameter to consider. Um, I mean, this whole issue, you know, of drug testing involves so many constitutional issues, including Fourth Amendment, you know, uh, issues that go way beyond search, you know, it goes into the First Amendment and, and, you know, it, it's something that I'd like to be able to read a little bit more about, and so that's why I'm, I'm asking that we table this until we have a chance to perhaps familiarize ourselves a little bit more with some of the references.
All right, well, the, the motion was made to table, so we have to, by Robert Schules, we have that on that. Okay, so a motion was made to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded, no discussion under tabling, right? Okay, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
I oppose.
The chair opposes as well, so the motion fails. Okay. So, so, Karen, your, your point notwithstanding, um, I, I don't, so who else has a, a thought on this?
I have a thought.
I know.
Amazing, I have a thought on this. Understanding Department of Labor and understanding that, what, what goes into it, I understand that the CDL people have to be doing the drug testing, and those that are not CDL-licensed do not have to have the drug testing done. I feel as if we sit there and say that we are going to put this drug testing policy into place and test anybody and everybody that drives a town vehicle, it's gonna open a can of worms, because let's just say someone does test positive, right? All, now, they say, okay, well, I have a problem, and now they go through counseling, and that's part of the insurance we have to pay for them to go through counseling, because we've indicated they have an issue. So it's gonna go down that road.
They've indicated.
They've indicated, we have an issue, so now we have an issue, now they're out on, out on leave, and we're having the position for them, and we're having to do that. We don't have one now, it's only for CDL drivers, as required by the Department of Labor.
Transportation.
Transportation, sorry. The Department of Labor also covers it.
The state law.
The state law. So why are we gonna go, I understand, take it one step further, but we're just opening a can of worms, 'cause we're gonna have to go into the unions with this.
Oh, and, and that brings up, what about people we have contracts with? So the police chief and the deputy police chief? Do we have to add that to their contracts? I didn't even think of that. That would be a fun conversation with the chief. They're gonna be randomly drug tested, I mean, not that would be an issue for him, but...
Or for any chief that we put into that position, what about the fire department? What about the fire chiefs? We have such a hard time now trying to get members for the fire department. Now we're going to suggest to our fire department members, who are volunteer, since you have the chance to drive a fire truck, and even though it is a lot of money, we're gonna put you into this drug testing, so now they're gonna have to lose the time from their paying job to go get drug tested.
Yeah, how would that work with a volunteer?
And they would, and-
Moreover, how would it work with you? We couldn't throw you out of office for-
No, 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 I'm saying, with, what happens is, we get a, uh, Foley calls in that morning.
Yeah.
It says, these three employees are up for drug test.
Yeah.
Tony Di Primo goes and gets them, puts them in a truck, and drives them immediately to Griffin.
Yeah.
How would we do that with a, with a volunteer fireman?
With a volunteer firefighter.
That's what I mean.
Or any ambulance person.
Well, didn't you not say that the first election position is under consideration to be added to this, to the safety, um, sensitive?
No, no, I'm saying, people who drive town vehicles.
It'd be anybody that drives a town vehicle, it's-
Oh, I would be the same. I mean, if that call from Foley came, I would have to get and go, but I'm here, it could be, we could have a fireman that's working-
But how, how would we remove you from office, or what would the punitive steps be?
Oh, you couldn't remove me.
For an elected position?
I don't think you could.
I mean, the only, the only-
There's no recall provision.
The only reason that I, um, voted no on tabling this is 'cause I would like to discuss this further, particularly because there's no legislation in front of us, um, but I have way, no, this is just an opinion, this is not, this is not-
Those are disopinions.
This is a concept.
This, yeah, this is just a philosophical discussion at this point, there's no-
Large point, timeout, timeout.
Pressing.
What Warren did is not a philosophical discussion.
We're having a philosophical discussion.
It's a legal opinion.
This is a legal opinion.
That's right.
It's sparking a philosophical discussion.
Right.
We're having a discussion as to whether or not the concept of instituting a new drug policy makes sense.
Correct.
To me, it doesn't.
To me, it does not. I've actually thought a lot about this, um, and I've, I've done a lot of research on it, and I can't imagine myself ever voting yes on any legislation that comes in, in front of me, for a million reasons, and some of which have been discussed already. If, if we get into a knockdown, drag-out argument, I will list them all out, but I don't know if we're going to need to do that.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're getting there. I don't think we're getting there.
I do have a...
Let's, 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 let's not get distracted on that. Let's, so, if we're saying it for safety purposes, right? We're talking volunteer firefighters. We're talking ambulance people.
Well, it could.
We're talking our SRT team.
We could, we could exclude them, could we?
No, you can't, because they drive town vehicles.
Well, the, before we even get, get to that point, my, my first question is, do we have a problem in town?
Well...
I mean, this, this concept is, where is it coming from? Are we trying to address a specific issue? In my opinion, I don't think we are. So, so the question I have is, what we have in place currently, which is all CDL drivers required to do it, that's state law, that's covered, that's, it is what it is. If, if you come to work and you think your buddy is drunk, driving away in a dump truck, you're going to tell your boss. We have a, we have a system in place...
Right, that person can go.
That would, that would necessitate some kind of a test, that's a probable cause, or whatever. You can call the cops, or you can, you can have somebody recommend a, a drug test. So, we have a system in place to address that. So my question is, do we need to add anything else? Do we need to change it? In my opinion, at, at this point, I don't see why, unless somebody, you know, convinces me otherwise.
The genesis of...
The reason why is called liability.
Well, the, well, the genesis of this is the Public Works Director. He used to always be drug tested. The dr- the Public Works Director does not have a CDL, and the Public Works Director is in a union. So it's a different set of circumstances to what we've had in the past. So that's kind of what the genesis of this is.
Well, if he doesn't have a CDL...
He's not, well, by our current standard, he's not required.
Um, by the Department of Transportation and by state regulations...
Well, by our current standard, because we only do CDL people.
Right.
And the regulations state only CDL drivers.
No, no, but I'm saying, by our standard, we have nothing, it just...
But the town's adopted.
The town's adopted.
Is the minimum.
Right.
Anne Marie is what you're saying, right?
Right.
Right.
Right. So he doesn't fall under it, so that's null and void, thanks?
Well, no, that's why, that's where this discussion has come from, that's...
It's, it's walled.
Stefan, just ask the question where it came from. I'm just letting you know where it came from. I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that's where it came from.
I know, but it's like beating, it, it...
It's a yes or no. We want to do everybody, or we want to just keep it the way it is?
Well, so, so the answer to Len's question is, we do not have an issue in town where this needs to be implemented, because we've had so many problems or things that have happened.
There's no wish, issue that we are aware of.
Okay.
Nor have, at least to my recollection, there's been one employee that's ever been taken.
Okay. The, like, to Anne Marie's point...
And that was, this was many years ago.
Yeah.
Many years.
It doesn't sound like it's a necessary step to me, personally. I haven't heard any evidence or any argument that this is something that needs to happen right now for our town in the name of public safety or, um, discipline of, uh, employees that are having issues, or whatever it may be. So I'm, I haven't heard anything, and after reading the, the opinion, it's clear to me, it doesn't sound like it's something that we should be putting in place.
Right. And why would we waste time and town monies on that testing? Because those tests are very expensive.
With, with regards to, I mean, Karen brought up an interesting point to me, you know, liability. Do towns, maybe you know the answer to this question, Warren, maybe you don't. Do towns that have similar, I imagine we, we're pretty common with regard to our current drug testing policy being what it is. Do towns have ex, you know, an extreme liability, uh, or risk because of their existing policies that are similar to ours? Or is this something that, um, you know, are ti- other towns in the state kind of going in a different direction to decrease the liability?
No.
So, I mean, I, I under- I certainly appreciate the possibility of getting sued by, by, you know, a poor unfortunate person who's, you know, the victim of, uh, you know, some criminal negligence or something on behalf of one of our town employees, but at the same time, um, you know, if, if, I'm pretty comfortable with what we have in place, if it's actually, um, you know, the norm, and, you know, given the fact that most of our town employees, if not all, and most of our town volunteers are very responsible individuals, that don't come to work drunk, don't come to work, um, on drugs or anything else, and, and obviously would be re- would be able to recognize if one of their coworkers or co-volunteers is, and pull them out of that situation. Um, you know, I don't necessarily see the need for it, although I do appreciate your, your, your pointing out the liability issue, Karen, and that's certainly an important issue, but I just don't see the need at the moment to change it based on, you know, a, a special circumstance with regard to one specific employee.
Karen?
I, I agree with most of what you just said. However, um, a, a question that is a very unfair question to ask you is, where do we stand with regard to the number of volunteers who would be subject, you know, to this kind of testing? Um, you know, volunteer firemen or, uh, other volunteers, um...
You mean, numbers-wise?
Yes, I, in, in terms, well, we're asking, uh, it was suggested we ask for a comparison with other towns.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, and I know that's a very unfair question. I understand that.
That's correct.
But, but that, but that is a, a point in this argument.
Well, I think that's gonna, I mean, it's a good point, but I think it's going to be based on the size of the town that has the policy, if they have a paid fire department versus a volunteer fire department, so there's a lot of factors into it.
I, and, which is what I'm trying to point out.
For us, we're probably looking at twenty-five or thirty drivers between fire and ambulance, I would say, is probably a, a rough estimate.
But you, you, you always, and, and...
Because not everybody can drive.
Not, I am...
Right. I mean, a fire truck.
Um, not to offend anybody, but you just can't close your eyes and say, oh, we don't have a problem in Seymour. Or, you know, we don't know.
Well, Karen, do you have evidence that we do?
Maybe. Maybe I do, and I'm certainly not going to say so tonight. However, I think the, the, um, the question of, uh, examining the issue is well worth our time. Uh, Warren clearly put a great deal of work into putting together, you know, a, a legal document that cites all kinds of precedents, and, uh, you know, including Second District. You know, I, I think that it's something that is worth our time looking at without just saying, you know, okay, we, you know, we've got one case here that came out of New Haven, and this was what the Second Circuit decided.
That's a labor dispute between New Haven and the opposition, the main purpose of the party.
Oh, oh, but, but my point is, you know, you, you did a great deal of research into this issue, and, and I think it's something that should be called to our attention. It, it should be something that we know, you know, what we're talking about before we come in here and say, well, Seymour doesn't have a problem, and so let's not even have a policy. I understand it would be much easier to just leave it up to the state of Connecticut and say, you know, uh, we'll, we'll go with whatever their policy is. You know, uh, if, you know, decriminalization of half an ounce of marijuana is agreeable to the state of Connecticut, then that's what the law is. But I think it's something that we, I, I couldn't have si- I couldn't have sat here ten minutes ago and, and quoted what Stefan just quoted with regard to THC. I couldn't. I'm not that knowledgeable about it, and, and I don't like having to vote on something that I'm not prepared to express my opinion on.
Right now, right now, there's nothing to vote on.
I understand that, right, right now there is, uh, which is why I moved to table this. I, I was asking for a little extra time so that I could familiarize myself with some of the, um, material that, that Warren is pointing out here, some of the decisions, precedents, that he is pointing out here. And that's, that was my only concern.
Well, this has been...
Can this be discussed again?
Oh, this can be discussed at any time. But Karen, this was in the packets back in October. This is not the first time that this has been handed out. So we've had this for some time. I just brought it back in front of everyone just to make sure they wanted to make a, a reference while we were discussing. But, so, so where we stand now, um, is what this board wants to do going forward. We could look to take action, look to put something together, we could take no action. So unless someone makes a motion of some kind, then what will happen is, we will just move on with the policy as it is. It can be revisited at any time by some, any one of the selectmen, asking that it be put back on the agenda, just like any other issue at this time. But we have no prepared, um, ordinances, we have no prepared, anything.
There's no specific action to take.
No.
I think it makes sense to, you know, move forward or move on, um, and if, obviously, if you want to delve more into it later on, Karen, make a recommendation, we add it to the agenda down the road.
I, I would agree with that. If we were going to be asked to put a policy, to implement a policy, um, such as, you know, is being referenced here, with a lot of the little details, as I, I will readily admit, I don't know. I just don't, I want to be able to make an informed decision. And secondly, let me say in my own defense, I didn't miss a meeting in October, and I don't recall seeing a three-page document with regard to a drug policy.
Oh, it's, it's definitely in there. And, I mean, an email went out last week as well, to everybody.
Okay, I'll, I'll check that.
Okay, so, well, let me, let me maybe ask the question a different way, and let's take a consensus, and we'll start with Stefan, because I'm sure no one's sure where he stands on this, but...
I have no idea, either.
Do you have any interest whatsoever of putting together a policy, um, with regards to drug testing for non-CDL employees for the town of Seymour?
I could put together a policy for you pretty quickly, to say we won't drug test non-CDL people. So, no, I don't have an interest in that.
Okay. Then let's just go this way to get a consensus. Karen?
I, I would, I would agree with that, believing as I do that we don't have to reinvent the wheel to have the wheel work. We, certainly, in my experience in the school district, we borrowed and, and in many cases, did a little bit more than borrowing from other towns with regard to major decisions that had to be made. And so I'd, I'd really like to see perhaps a policy that is in effect in a town of comparable size...
Wait, hold on, that wasn't a question. Stick with what we have, which is just testing the CDL employees, or looking to add something else to it?
Okay, I thought you were looking for...
Yeah. Do, I just want to get a consensus of where we stand.
I agree with Stefan.
Okay, so we're going to stay with just the CDL-only employ- okay, bye.
I don't see the need to.
Okay, CDL.
It's okay to say you agree with Stefan. It's hard, it's real hard to say.
It just hurts coming up and out. Al.
Keep it status quo.
Okay, Anne Marie?
I agree with Stefan.
I'm, I'm going to say it too, and I have no problem saying it.
That's not the...
We all agree with Stefan.
I came in here thinking I was fighting on the losing side of a five-one decision tonight, so I did.
I don't, I don't see the...
Prepare for it. I just wanted to prepare for it.
It's Christmas, that's the greatest line ever. Okay, now, but listen, in, in all fairness, if anyone wants to revisit this at any time, that's certainly something that can be done. You know, Karen, if you'd like us to do some research on something, we have no problem doing that. I mean, if you want to let Rory know, he loves that, we can call, we can call CCM and see. But, but again, I think I would hesitate doing a lot of research...
No, I understand.
Unless the opinion of the board changes that it's something that they want to do. But if that's information you'd like to see, we can certainly get that for, for you from CCM.
Okay.
So that's not a problem at all.
Like, whether from Lexus.
Well, no, I mean, in comparison to other towns, I'm saying.
Oh, oh, yes, oh, that, yes.
Okay, Rory, can you reach out to CCM, see if they have something just for, on any type of drug policies, and we'll get that over to Karen?
Thank you.
And obviously, we'll copy everyone else, if anyone else wants to see it too. So, and then after you look at that, Karen, if you want more...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Warren, anything else you want to add on that? No? And thank you for your, uh, opinion. Very good.
This is a great opinion, by the way, I really, I was very thrilled. Get a lot of, his opinion was a lot of information.
Oh, yeah.
I thought it was very helpful.
It was.
There we go, look at this, everybody.
Mrs. Brad, you're next. Rory?
Rory's taking a nap.
Attorney Stanek, would you care to comment? In, in, in agreeance with, with Stefan or not? Not on what you feel about drug testing?
He's thinking about...
Are we going to go the whole room unanimous with him?
You can fight it, Fred, it's okay.
No, I think Fred wants to say no, but he doesn't want to rock the boat, so we'll move on. I have no prob- is, is it? I got the nod from Warren, so fire away.
No, they don't, they need a Q license. Yep, not a CDL.
There it is, none.
There we go. We're, we're a full...
Asking you shall receive full service.
Full-service group. How could we not respect a question from our only, our only member of the public?
But that was a good question, Attorney Stanek.
Oh, it was a good question.
We have a seat up here, if you want to jump in.
Yeah.
We'll gladly take you.
Visiting seat.
That's right. Like a doctoral visit.
What?
No, the, uh, doctors, they travel around to colleges.
Oh.
Get it? Speakers.
It's been a well-run meeting, just very, by the book, tonight.
There we go, that's the word I was looking for, I apologize. See?
There's two seats, okay.
Embarrassed.
Two seats? Are you leaving again?
Ex officio.
All right. We could trade you straight up for Anne Marie right now.
Yeah.
And a player to be named later.
And a bottle of root beer.
Back to balls.
Bingo. Okay. All right, we're digressing quick. The first meeting in the term is always the most serious of them, of them all. All right, item number eight. This is appointments, and we have six hundred and twelve. So, let's work down the list. What I've found, um, is that we have one person make the motion, one person make the second, which just kind of helps speed the process along. So, um, we're going to go with the ends of the tables.
Okay.
So Stefan, you can make the motion, Anne Marie, if you second it, and then we can certainly have discussion on people, or else we could be here all night, so. Okay. First, Rob Van Agen, Economic Development Commission, it's a new appointment, it's a three-year term, it expires December fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Christopher Bowen, Economic Development Commission, it's a new appointment, it's a three-year term, it expires December fifth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Al Bruno, Board of Public Works, it's a new appointment, it's a two-year term, it expires December fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair vo- chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero-one, and please note, Mr. Brown has abstention. Christine Alman, Memorial Day Parade, oh, excuse me. Anne Marie Dragonis, Board of Selectment Secretary, uh, it's a new appointment, it's a two-year term, it expires twelve-three, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded very quickly, I like that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes, uh, five-one, and please note, Anne Marie's, uh, nay vote. Dissension, thank you, Karen. Uh, Christine Al- it's just that, it, it's a ceremonial position, it doesn't require you doing anything. It's just if something happens to the...
We just talked about the fact that nobody knew it existed, not too long ago.
I think if the selectmen and the deputy first, the first selectman, deputy first selectman, I think are absent, you run the meeting, I believe. So I think that's all.
There's no quorum then, so no, go next.
Sure there is.
Yeah, there's a quorum.
There's still five. Well, let's hope she doesn't run a meeting, because basic math is a struggle for her.
Way to jurn.
Miller, do you really want to get throw punched today?
Christine Alman, Memorial Day Parade Committee, it's a new appointment, a two-year term, expires December fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Motion made and seconded?
Oh, sorry.
I don't, yeah, okay.
That's okay, any, as long as it's twenty, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't see her on the list, but...
Yeah, but she's not on the list.
She's right after me.
Did you just give me the...
Oh, wait, hold on, now I have...
It's, it's the new list that was passed out.
Oh, I get it.
Because we missed a couple.
All right.
So I apologize for that.
Okay.
Picked up nicely by our new secretary.
That's it.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. Okay, so, uh, so Christine Alman, motion was made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Bill Zawicki, Permanent Building Committee, two-year term, it expires twelve-five, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Pat Lombardi, Permanent Building Committee, two-year term, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Warren, to make this quicker.
No, because I have a comment.
Hold on, can I just say the person's name and the board? Or do I have to read the whole thing across? Okay, so is everyone comfortable with that? I'll go with the person's name and the board and I'll make the motion and the second, okay.
Yeah.
Suzanne Garvey, Permanent Building Committee, but it's a part of the Library Subcommittee.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Paula Chapla, Permanent Building Committee, the Library Subcommittee.
Oh, so moved, sorry.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bruce Baker, Strategic Planning Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Jim Cortella, WPCA.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes. Jim Cortella's the one that replaced Tommy Kuzo when Tommy Kuzo left in the middle of the year. That's why he's a four-year term, not a, we appointed him a couple months ago when Tommy resigned.
Okay, so we'll make note of that and see if we just made a mistake. Thank you for pointing it out. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bob Sealy, Zoning Board of Appeals, so moved. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Phyllis Giacamoussi, Commission on the Aging.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Evelyn Mulner, Mulner, excuse me, Commission on the Aging.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Suzanne Riley, Commission on the Aging.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Len Green Jr., Deputy First Selectman.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Mr. Green's abstention. Patrick Lombardi, MSOC.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Rory Burke, Special Assistant to the First Selectment for Special Projects, motion's made.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion?
Do we really want to do this?
No.
I don't know. Ah, man. Yeah.
Okay. Leanna, you want to come back? Yeah. That's right. Out you go. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Susan Horlick, Housing Authority.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Dominic Bellucci, Housing Authority.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. How about grouping the same committee? Oh, no, because in case somebody wants to vote, never mind. Beverly Kenny, Memorial Day Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and.
Second.
Seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. John Stelma, Memorial Day Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Preet Singh, Memorial Day Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and.
Second.
Seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Daniel Steffery, Memorial Day Committee.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Pat Lombardi, Moderator.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Why is his name Pat here and then Patrick up on the top?
Yeah, it's the same person.
And I'm sure he's in many other places on here as well.
No, he's actually Pat on the front.
Yeah, he's Pat on the front as well.
Yeah. All right, so we're going to run, we're going to keep running with the Pat.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Lucy McConalog, Moderator. Motion made and.
Second.
Seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Tom Amy, Northwest Connecticut Communications.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Tom Amy, Open Burning Official.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Paul Wedowitz, Open Burning Official.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Tim Willis, Open Burning Official.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Kirk Miller, Ordinance Committee.
So moved.
Motion's made and.
Second.
Seconded, is there any discussion? Well, it's the, never mind. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, all abstained. Motion passes 5-0-1. Len Green Jr. Nope, because that way there's no confusion. We're going to have a new ordinance committee. All in favor, oh, excuse me, motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1. Stephen Bohuniac. Stefan Bohuniac, Ordinance Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Steve's abstention. Mike Argano, Parks Commission.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bill Zawicki, Parks Commission.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bob Lang, Parks Commission.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Veronica Hoffman, Pearson Memorial Committee.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Leanna McMurray, Pearson Memorial Committee.
So moved.
So, second.
Motion's made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Susan DeBarber, Pearson Memorial Committee.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, one quick thing. I see a theme with the Pearson Memorial. Can you just explain why all the ladies of the clerk's office are on there? I just, I just want to know for practical reasons.
It's the way it's always been and Leanna, if you could add to.
Every year is Richard our Pearson fund and every year on Christmas, we look up the names of certain military members and similar. And we get all their names and send them Christmas checks through the Pearson fund.
Okay.
So, yeah, we always ask people to send names and, and their names. We always accept their names for everything.
So it just makes sense to have it done in the office, by people here in the office.
Yeah, awesome.
It's always been done, goes way back to, yeah, sure. Great. Thanks. And we, we voted on so, yes?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Sean Walsh, Board of Public Works.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Emery Dragonis, Board of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes, you're beautiful. 5-0-1, and please note Emery's. Emery's no vote. Rich Demko, Board of Public Works.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bill Stowe, Board of Public Works. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Wait. Can we go back to Emery because you have names U and an R?
We'll make that.
It seems like everybody there is a U and I'm not sure everybody is.
Demko's an R.
I understand. We should have put an E in between Emery.
We could make something up.
Bill and Sean are both unaffiliates.
Okay, just.
Okay, all right, there we go. Brian Ryan, South Central Regional Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bertram Moses, Town Council.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair, chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Mr. Bruno's abstention. Conan Wool, Town Council Land Use.
So moved.
Motion made and.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Benjamin Proto, Town Council, WPCA.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bertram Moses, Town Council Workers' Compensation.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1. Please denote Mr. Bruno's abstention. Conan Wolf, Town Council Special.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Bertram Moses, Town Council Labor.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Mr. Bruno's abstention. Welcome back aboard. Warren? Shipman and Goodwin, Town Council Bonding.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. B&amp;B Engineering, Town Engineer.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. B&amp;B Engineering, Town Engineer for Roads and Drainage.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Don Smith Jr., Town Engineer for Special Projects.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. And then Tom Kuzo, we are eliminating from the list. Okay, there's a few more appointments that we will need to do at our meeting on the 21st. So we will have those ready for that. Thank you very much.
I might want to make a note. You have me under reappointment on the ordinance committee. It's actually the first time on.
Yeah, I think for both you and.
Yeah, actually, yeah, Rory, you have to change for Len and Stefan, the new appointments.
Three-year turnover continues.
Okay. Item number nine, tax refunds and abatements. Oh, actually, since we don't have to read a letter anymore. All right, in your package you have the new tax refund sheet from the Tax Collector's Office. It's signed off by Susan Bowen in the amount of $3,976.18. Could I have a motion to accept? Motion made by Len, seconded by Al. Is there any discussion? Bless you. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Item number 10, we have no transfers before us. Item number 11 is correspondence. We have just two, three pieces of correspondence. Excuse me, we have the check registers. We have your invitation to the Great Hill Ho's Christmas Party, which is on Tuesday, December 19. So you're all certainly invited and see all the information is there. If you'll be attending, please let John Cronin or Quinn Levy know that you'll be making it. Again, our meeting that week is on Wednesday. And then we have a resignation letter, which we just received yesterday from John Suits. So we will need another new person for economic developments. Okay, that closes correspondence. With that, we'll move on to item number 12, which is public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Stanek, please.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'm going to make the record, Fred Stanek, 22 North Benham Road, Seymour. First of all, I'd like to congratulate each of you on your reelection to this board and election by Mrs. or of Mrs. Banka. I know it's an honor for each of you to serve in this capacity and it's an honor for the town to have each of you serving the town. My concern this evening is with the striping of many of the roads, the centerline striping of many of the roads, such as Botford Road, Mountain Road, Bungie Road, near the Bungie School. The striping is fading and it's difficult to see, especially at night. I can recollect that when one of my sons first obtained his driver's license many years ago, he said to me after the lines were painted, repainted, he said, "When you see Mr. Kuskowski, thank him for re-striping the streets because I can see better at night, see the centerline, and it helps me driving." But if you look at those particular roads and many others, I think there's the need for striping. I don't know if it's too late in the season to do so. I would also like to comment about the blue striping by the police station and the red striping by the firehouses. Very diff, I think those striping at night, that striping at night is very difficult to see. At least I have difficulty, especially on a night like tonight with rain and no moon. As I go up Botford Road, I have trouble seeing the centerline. So I would just like to bring those safety concerns to your attention. I'm sure there are policy reasons why those lines are red and blue, identifying the safety of the firehouse presence and the presence of the police station. But I think that those, those striping issues should be reexemplified. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanek. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Hearing no other public comment, we will close public comment and we'll move on to item number 13, Selectmen's Public Comment. Stefan?
Sure, I just want to say thank you to the town of Seymour and the voters particularly for reelecting me. It's a great honor. I've had a pleasure to serve here. I've tried to do as much as I can and I will continue to do as much as I can to serve Seymour in the future. So thank you for the trust that you have put in me. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen?
I'd like to reiterate Stefan's remark. This is my third go around at this job and it's.
Fourth.
Have I been here that long?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it only seems like three. It's, it's been fun on many nights, but on many nights it's been frustrating. Difficult to be in the minority and feeling like at times I had something important to say, which didn't really make it on anybody else's list. But nature of politics and being a novice politician, I understand how that works, so. But I'd like to thank the voters, the electorate for giving me the honor and the privilege of serving the town as I did for many years at Seymour High. I would also like to point out tonight that we have had three resignations from the Economic Development Commission. Mary Alice Sabeta, from whom we did receive a lengthy letter. John Suits, whose letter was somewhat tardy in arriving. And Rosalie Avril. All three of these people have resigned according to, as of December 31. Which, which leaves two existing members of the EDC still on that board. And I understand there is another person on that board who has missed many months of meetings and, and has not been able to participate fully in the work of that, that particular part of our government. I, I think that the resignations ought to be taken seriously and, and should be examined with the sincerity with. with the sincerity with, excuse me, with which they were offered, but also with the knowledge that there are members of that commission who, while they may, might not have publicly stated all the reasons for their resignation, nonetheless found it time to move on and found it to be a, a job that they simply don't want to do anymore because they feel, and I've spoken to these, some of these people, and they feel like they're not being effective in their position. So I think we ought to take a serious look at that. I, I do know from firsthand knowledge that there is serious economic development initiatives being pursued by Mr. Temple and Oxford and Mayor Cetti with regard to their development and their, their land use. I know EDC just yesterday received a list of the available properties from our economic development director, which is somewhat untimely and certainly something that we had asked for, or I had asked for, months ago. I would like to support my husband's comments about the striping on the roads. While I, I agree with the fact that in October it was a very nice gesture and, and something that, that many of us, all of us certainly support, the cause of breast cancer. The pink line is not, it, it becomes a safety issue. A blue line, a red line, a pink line. If you can't see the line at night because it's foggy or it's rainy, it's a safety issue. And it no longer is a decorative or celebratory kind of expression. And I think that's something that Public Works should be addressing as a safety issue. I'd like to also compliment the veterans, Mr. Yagavane, on the job that he did at, at Broad Street Park on Veterans Day. The ceremony was, although it was very, very cold, and I didn't make it for the whole ceremony, I, I enjoyed the presentation and, and certainly support the cause and, and will for as long as I'm able to. They have the park nicely decorated as an honor to the veterans for the holidays, and I think they ought to be commended for their work and their time. I know there's a lot of volunteer work that goes on at that park, and I, I really feel we need to compliment the people involved in both the ceremony for Veterans Day and the decorations for the holidays. And here comes my segue. I would also like to say to my husband, with whom I will be married 35 years this Saturday, that if he would like to get married again in Broad Street Park, I'm available.
Oh, I'm responding to that one. As a justice to the peace, it'd be my honor to remarry you. For free. I didn't realize they got the charge. Well, happy anniversary to you two on Saturday. Thirty-five years is certainly something to be very proud of.
Thank you.
So.
Where? I did all the work.
I'm, I'm not touching any of this. I'm just giving the congratulations and walking away. Thank, anything else, Karen?
No, that's it, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Len?
Yeah, I just, I'll, I'll say my spiel as well with regards to thanking, you know, the people of Seymour for entrusting me for another two years in this position. And I just want to say I'm looking forward to serving alongside each of you again for another two-year term and, and Trish as well. I'll, I'll have something to say to her when she's here too. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, but I'm looking forward to it, so. And with regard to actually the striping, it's kind of interesting you say that, because I did notice myself just the other day when I was driving, that it's, it does seem a little bit faded. And I, listening to, to the recommendation that somebody be done about it, I actually thought, you know, there, there are towns that do install reflective, I don't even know what they are, maybe patches or, strips or something like that. And maybe that's something that we could do that wouldn't be, you know, too, too costly, but still, you know, indicate where you are and show the, the respect for the various services that we recognize with the striping. Maybe we can do something along those lines. Worth, worth taking a look at it, at least in my mind. So I thought I'd offer that up anyway.
Well, we now have two members of the board, so I'm sure they will take that back and will address it at the first meeting.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you very much. Al?
Just wanted to first say we had a wonderful Christmas parade recently, and it was a great job by the staff putting it together, had another fun time, as always. It's always a good time. Great turnout, great weather, town always loves it. Congratulations to all the award winners in that parade. And I just want to especially thank Alex, he had, he had his award. And he also asked my daughter to hold the banner for him, along with Caitlin Miller, and they both had a blast. And just, just a good time, it's loved, it's good to see the town really cares about its kids. My wife and I noticed that when we first moved here, it was 14 years ago now, and we just noticed that Seymour takes care of its kids. And it's really a, a family-based community, and that's what attracted us to it anyway, even though I just grew up across the river in Shelton. But it, it's just a wonderful town, I hope that keeps going.
You came to a good side.
You're right.
Also, just a wonderful inauguration ceremony last night. It was great to be a part of that. Excited to begin my fourth term on the board of selectmen. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Seymour and also be part of this team of folks we have here. Everybody has their best interests of Seymour in mind, it's obvious every meeting. And I look forward to continuing to move our town along in a positive direction with all, all the folks on our board. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Al. Anne Marie?
Um, just wanted to say congratulations, sort of, that I got elected, and thank you to the voters that come to Seymour.
It's my sixth term sitting on this board. Since 2007, I've sat on this board.
That'd be fun.
Oh.
No.
2006, sorry.
I thought it was more than that. No, I don't mean that in a bad way, I just thought it was more years.
It seems like. Ten years is an awfully long.
No, no, but I'm saying, I thought it was much more than that, is what I'm saying. I'm going to stop talking, because I'm, this hole's getting deeper and deeper, I'm in right now.
And congratulate, I was at the Seymour Ansonia game, and just wanted to congratulate the boys on, on making it to the playoffs. It was a very good game. The parade was a very nice parade. It was a nice, beautiful day. I did attend the first night, Saturday night with Santa Claus being there, did walk around the town. I did have a couple people come up to me, though, however, and show some concerns about the sidewalks in front of the Walsh, the Walsh Construction, or there's the surveyors over there, too. The sidewalk is kind of caved in and, and going all the way down into that little parking over there where the, that parking lot is, where the road ties are. I didn't know if that's a town issue with the Department of Public Works, or if that's a resident issue.
I don't know what you're talking about, so we'll have to.
So if you're going down towards Zoe's.
Yep.
Walsh, there's a.
Oh, Mike Horrible?
Mike Horrible?
Mike Horrible's area and Sean, not Sean, and Walsh Construct, Walsh and Sons Construction, they rented a building over there.
That white, the white building that was just redone?
Yeah. So the sidewalk is kind of unlevelled over there, so it was kind of nighttime when the parents were walking their kids to the pizza place.
I'll, I'll have Tony take a look at it.
All right, so I didn't know if it was a resident or a. I have a, as you did say, you pointed both Al and I to the board of public works. We have our first public works meeting next to, next Monday.
I'm back.
Stop, it is fun.
Good time.
Um, good times. The ref, we'll also bring up the reflective lines of the meeting as well.
Yep.
So, that's all I have.
Okay. Oh, and just, you know, of the four inaugurations, that was the first time I didn't quote you, Fred. I just wanted to point that out, I realized that last night after I got done talking. Because I always tell the story about RTC and DTC are two clubs. And I think that's, I think everybody kind of voiced that tonight, that while there's elections that go on, what's most important is that we all work together in the best interest of Seymour, and I think our discussion tonight just proved that. You know, it was not a political thing, everybody shared their thoughts on it, and, you know, come to find out, we all agreed, which is, I think, a great thing. And I think if you look back over the last six years or so, I don't think there's been many votes that haven't been seven zero. I know there's been a few contentious ones, and, you know, those have kind of gone on party lines or, or different things, but I think it's. Oh, yeah, which is definitely a good thing.